All right, so we can call the order at 7:06 PM. Kathy, could you take minutes?
Sure. She said relax.
Okay. Then the first item on the agenda for this evening would be selecting a committee chair. Bill, I believe you were the committee chair last year.
I know, I'll do, I'll take the same duties this year.
Okay. Any other discussion on committee chair? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve Bill as the committee chair.
Motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, congratulations, Bill.
Okay, thanks, I'll see you later.
Good journey.
Good meeting, everybody.
That's right, that's my first, my first duty, yeah. Sorry, Eric, carry on.
Quite right, quite right. Okay, then after that, we have the miniature of the March 9th, 2021 meeting. So, and I had sent those out with the agenda and gold documents. So, any discussion on the March 9 meeting minutes? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
Motion.
I'll second.
That was Matt?
Yes.
And Bill, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here is unanimously takes us up to the goals. Okay. And I will share over to that here. Okay. So a quick look back at our goals in 2019. We didn't initially-
I'm sorry, I have a question, I don't mean to-
Fire away.
Did we not set goals for the finance committee in 2020?
We didn't set goals for any of the committees in 2020.
None of them at all?
No, initially when they were getting, when the committees were getting organized in, in May, the, the thinking was, well, you know, how, how do we set goals for, for however long this is going to last? So, you know, maybe we should just wait a month or two till things become clear and then set goals then. But of course, things just kept right on going.
Okay, I'll just make a note of that because it will seem-
So it's kind of a look back. Back in 2019, we were looking to generate at least three new ideas to reduce existing costs with a goal of at least $5,000 in reductions into operating expenses. You know, we've definitely had some significant successes on that front. You know, the, the new contract for phone service looks like it's going to turn out to be very much a cost savings. The additional revenue with the passports has been, has been good. Also, in a lot of small ways, just really continue to encourage staff to be cost conscious as we go about our day-to-day business. And I think that in a lot of small decisions on a day-to-day basis, that that cost consciousness, you know, was leads led up to some bigger numbers at the end of most fiscal years. I believe our, our new contract with, for elevator maintenance is, is a bit better of a deal as well. So we've been picking, picking up as, oh, I'm trying to think of the, the other one that I know I should remember, which is the HVAC agreement. And that was about two years ago that we signed the extended maintenance agreement for, for the HVAC system, recognizing that because of the age of the system, we were starting to get higher repair costs. And that looking at the numbers, we could pay a bit more initially to expand the, the scope of the, the maintenance contract that we had and that that would, because of the age of the system, be a cost savings. So that's been another important one.
So how much would you say that has, what's the net result of all those items?
Well, I mean, the, it's still early days with the phone system, but that seems like it could be anywhere, depending on the month, a $300 to $400 a month savings, which, you know, adding up to anywhere from $3,500 to $4,500 a year, which is significant. I'd have to take a look at the HVAC numbers in, in terms of the maintenance, because that tends to be a bit more, you know, up and down across years, depending on when things break. The passport revenue, of course, when we're open and available to do the passports, that looks like it will be generating about $10,000 a year in additional revenue, which is a great, good thing.
Is that up and running?
Passports are up and running again.
Are there an interest?
Definitely, yeah. Yeah, a lot of people coming in, there's a lot of people I think that are planning to, to travel over the summer.
Yeah, there was an article, I think, in the Wall Street Journal today talking about which countries are opening up and I talking about that as soon as the green light to certain countries, then people are going to start traveling and passports are going to probably be looked at.
Yeah.
I know there's some frames of ours are looking to travel, but they don't have passports and they're going to be looking at getting passports for trips since September.
Yeah. And I would say too, a high percentage of the, the folks that I've done passports for, that are planning to travel are, you know, people with family abroad. So it's, you know, I did passports for, you know, folks that were from Bosnia or Herzegovina earlier this, this week and, you know, a lady that was from Brazil. And, you know, which is kind of a facet that I hadn't thought of, but, you know, the, the travel ban there meant, you know, would have meant for, for families in multiple countries that there would, you know, not really been an opportunity for them to get together unless there was an emergency that came up. So.
How long have we had the passport program?
Beg your pardon?
How long have we had the passport program? Is it relatively new or I don't need exact-
It's relatively new, yeah. This would be our 2020, 2021 fiscal year that we just finished would have been our second full year.
Okay, and, and do, um, you know, do you feel there's a sufficient awareness that we offer that service? Is, is that something that we could potentially accentuate more or? I, I had no idea until joining the board, you know?
Yeah.
I wouldn't have even thought to, to look.
You know, we were kind of still a little bit in the process of just seeing where we were going to balance out in terms of traffic because we didn't want to, you know, if we found ourselves in a situation where all the, our, our appointment time was already filling up, we didn't want to go out and, and start advertising if, if we didn't have the additional time to offer. But yeah, you know, I, I think there's an assessment that to be made there as to whether that might be beneficial because it's definitely a new service that not a lot of people in the community know about.
Well, we're trustees that don't know about it, we have to assume there's a lot of people who don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Other word.
You know, you've got it in the newsletter, but it's, I was wondering kind of bring it to the attention on the website a little bit more that, because I, I do think that that could be a bigger revenue than the 10 grand if, as you said, all the, the reasons with families looking to, to gown about it. It's a lot easier to go to the library than to the post office because I, I don't think Lake, I don't know if Lake Bluff does passports, I know Lake Forest does, but I can't.
Lake Bluff doesn't.
Bluff never has.
Yeah, so I think it's just you've got to go down to Lake Forest to get the passport.
That or Shields Township, but their hours are pretty limited.
Yeah.
But I, I've thought for a few years now that, that a assign advertising some of our available services might be a great, good thing, whether it would be something that we would have up outside the library or maybe if we could get get some time on the, the bulletin boards out at the corner of Green Bay and 176 there for a week or two. Just, just to have up, you know, either exclusively about passports or maybe, you know, throw in, you know, we do passports, notaries, voter registration. You know, so some of these services that I don't think a lot of people are aware that we offer. So definitely something to consider. And just overall, I think touches on, you know, we need to be thinking more about advertising in general. Okay. Then the, the third goal was, oh, almost forgot the second part of the insured minimum 110K heads to general reserve at the end of the fiscal year in addition to 20K budgeted to head to reserve. We came pretty good, did pretty good on that over the last two years. It was 27,837. I think the initial draft of this document that I sent out might have had the wrong number there because I looked at the wrong line on the audit report. But this was the number that headed in, in 2019, 2020. And then fingers crossed, looks to be in the neighborhood of hang on here, I am looking for the oh, you know, I prepared that document for you and then I closed it and I don't have it up in front of me. I am sorry, Kathy, here we go. There we go. And right now, at the end of the, the fiscal year that just ended, we are projected to have 38, 431. So that's 65 between the, the two years, which is pretty good.
Very good, very good.
Right.
So there was a $10,000 from the village. So does that, does that 38,000 include that money that, okay, so includes that? And was there another amount discussed at the last board meeting that was floating around? I just didn't know where all this money went. But that's the final number for the last fiscal, fiscal year.
Yeah, and that might end up being, I mean, the auditors will get a, get a hold of everything and they'll, they always move a few invoices around. So that might end up being a little bit higher, but the 38 seems like it should be a pretty safe, safe bet.
That's excellent.
It's last, at the last meeting, I thought that number was 55 was the, was where it was. And then we said there's going to be some other bills are going to come off of that because and then other ones that would go on, but. So do you think it will be closer to that or you, or you've done the sort of calculations that is?
Um, I'm hoping that it's going to be closer to the, the 50.
Okay.
But
We'll wait, we'll wait to see.
So what, where's that?
And recognizing as, as well that against, you know, ordinarily, we try to avoid larger invoices that come due around the, the start of the fiscal year because they complicate calculations like this. But with the parking lot project coming up, we kind of couldn't avoid some of that, you know, we had to have the tree guy out and remove the trees and we had to have the, you know, electrician out and work on the bollards and okay. That, some of that might end up, it, it could go one way or the other as term, in terms of which fiscal year it gets billed to, so.
So we, we could see, we could see a, we could see our budget monies less in 2021. If some of those projects we budgeted in 21 are going to get put into the 2021. So it's apples and oranges, a little bit one, it's, it's either going to help us next year or it's going, it's just going to reduce the, the 54, 50, 55 from before.
Yeah.
What invoices get put in.
But you know, we, we've got some of the invoices now that are, that are rolling in, you know, with the, the invoice for the health insurance was factored in. I forwarded the note from Bettina that she had added in the, you know, made the deposit and journalized the entry for the village contribution for exterior repairs. So that's been put in as well. So I, I always just try to be careful on these numbers until they go, okay, until they go final. I, I think either case that really in, in terms of looking at the, the numbers for the last two years, it's either good or really good.
Yeah.
Which is a that, that's a good, good problem to have in, in, in terms of figuring out where that's going to land. So I am going to bring up here the the question sheet that I put together for the questions that you had, since I think they tie in at this point with the, looking back at the, some of the goals that we had set. The, the roof was replaced in the fall of 2018. There was a few odds and ends in the work that was done in spring 2019, but most everything was done fall of 2018. I vividly remember that they were out there finishing up the last of it as the snow was starting to fall. Looking at the history, the reserve balance, I tossed in a couple of years before the roof project to kind of show how we bounced down there as well. So in April 2017, we were at 539, 122,000. April of 2018, 551,000. And then after the roof project, we dropped down to 307,000. And really the, the, the goal of the, one of the goals as far as maintaining that general reserve is to avoid having it go below 25% of the operating expenses. Because at that point, it gets to be, it would get to be a challenge to be able to cover some of the potential unexpected expenses that might come up with the, the funds that would be in reserve. The 10 years or so, oh gosh, actually 15 years back, the last time there was a full HVAC replacement, it was in the neighborhood of $300,000. So to kind of ballpark that. Then at the end of 1920, we were back up to 335. And our projected end, again, conservatively is to, is that we're back up to 373,000, which takes us up to about 35% of operating expenses. So we're climbing back up.
So hopefully at the end of this fiscal year, we'll be at 400,000, which is impressive. I mean, we've worked hard in the last three years to do this.
And I, I think is a when we get to the, the levy discussion this, this fall for Bill, but also in particular for, for Matt, since you weren't with us for the levy discussion this past fiscal year. In, invariably, we always end up having a few meetings where we sit in with the, the village finance meeting with the village finance committee. And they generally kind of, they ask us questions. That's probably the nice way to put it. Generally, they would prefer for us to be more conservative than, than we actually are. So it's helpful for us to be able to, to show, you know, really what we're doing, what we're looking at, the, the trends on the numbers. I, I think the trend on our reserve balance would be a good one to show them the, this coming fall. So the, the, the parking lot cost, that was another question that had come up. Looking ahead for that as our capital expenses here, we budgeted $20,000 to cover for that. Some of the additional expenses have ended up being a bit higher than we'd anticipated, not the, the cost of the project itself, but the, the cost of taking down the tree to a small extent, but in particular, the electric. What we ran into was that we had to take out the, the bollard that was on that peninsula because you can't have the, have them stripping that section with there still being electricity in it. And when we were taking that bollard out, we discovered that rather than running the electricity out from the building, that the, the bollard on the far end of the parking lot actually that they had run it across so that it was a straight line along the, the back of the property instead of out from the building for that one. So we ended up having to pull them both out and then put the, put the one back in with a line this time coming over from the building. So that resulted in a little bit more of an expense than, than we'd anticipated.
Now, those lights, those lights are a lot more trouble than they were. We've spent, since I've been on the board, we've spent a huge amount of money on bollard lamps.
Usually usually not with the ones in back, those for whatever reason seem to be.
Some ones were expensive.
Yeah. But the, we, we've had some wonky issues with the ones in front, that's for certain. But I am happy to report that the electrician that put the one in back, back in place is not the one that we use to install the new ones in front. So that's good. That should help.
So this 25,000 will be paid out of this current budget or we're not sure or it's already been paid under a past budget?
Most of the bills have yet to be sent to us. Most of the invoices have yet to be sent, so that's just really a guess. So we'll, we'll see. But I don't, I don't have any concerns about our ability to cover the additional cost. Looking at the total for the, the funds being put towards reserve. You know, for, for previous fiscal years, of course, they were, the numbers had been pretty modest, that 12,000 was pretty indicative. Kathy, you know, you can speak to this. Prior to the the big expense with the, the roof, we had been at over over 500,000 there for, for a few years and we had sort of laid out a goal that we didn't want that fund balance to creep too much higher without it being earmarked for a particular project. Just because you know, general feeling that it didn't represent good transparency for the community. Certainly, there were some other organizations in the community that got into a little bit of trouble as, as far as how much they had in reserve. So just wanting to be careful about that. And then, you know, of course, after the expense, then we shifted gears towards needing to build that balance back up. So.
Eric, just a question on, on the roof, when the roof was done, did that, was that for the whole building included the, the village part as well?
Yep.
So it was okay?
Yep. At the at the, at the time, there were cedar shingle, it was a cedar shingle roof on both sides of the building and both sides were having ongoing problems where we had water that was regularly coming into the staff room and regularly running down the rafters in the museum. So we kind of, when the last time that the roof had gone on before then had the library had been in a situation where money was very tight, there were a lot of things that broke all at once and the library had basically at that time not had a reserve. So it was done with a eye towards cutting costs wherever possible. And unfortunately, that with the roof, that meant that there had been problems over time and starting not long after the roof was in place. So didn't quite get as long of lifespan as we wanted out of it. And by the time that it was coming off, there were some real issues that were happening. We also have a fun roof that requires us to do metalwork and masonry up there when we replace the, the whole thing, which added to the cost as well. I think the masonry ended up being a solid $50,000 of the cost, so. Okay, so dropping those in there, Kathy, those seemed pertinent to, to that.
Send me a copy of that anytime and I'll yeah. Put that in the minutes.
Sounds good. I'll send it out to the, to the whole committee, in fact. Last goal that we had set was to look for collaboration and partnership with the outreach committee to pursue and acquire at least three sponsorships from local organizations and our businesses for library programs, projects and services. This was one I, I think that ended up, if I remember correctly, ended up being played down a little bit pretty soon after it was passed. Because the, the full board just discussed whether it would be a good idea or not to go out there making too many big asks of local organizations, businesses right as we were ramping up for a capital fundraising campaign. So it, it ended up in terms of what we really wanted to get out there and do to be kind of a lower expectation, I think.
Yeah, and if you recall, there was some controversy, we there, that came out of the outreach committee, but it seemed to be kind of in conflict with the foundation. I mean, it wasn't well thought out. So I think we ought to table that notion until we know who's going to be asking. We could have had multiple people asking the same organization for money for three different reasons and that wouldn't go over too well, so.
Right. So we, I, I think ended up really approaching that goal as, as more of as a catch as catch can kind of a, a thing where, when there was a clear opportunity, such as we, we found with a seed exchange and working with Pasquazy and our continued partnership with the Lake Bluff Brewing Company being two good examples, as well as partnerships that we've had with Alawa Farms and a, a number of individuals and businesses in the community that have been kind of ready things that, that have come up rather than anything where we've been going out and really trying to make any significant asks of local businesses. I think we did overall pretty well on that. And I, I think we will get to a point here, once we've got past the capital campaign where we can really get out more comfortably, make some of those bigger asks. Looking ahead for 21, 22 for goals for the next year, I think ensuring a, the minimum of 10,000 headed to reserve in addition to the 20,000 that we budget for continues to be a worthwhile goal to, to aim for finance wise. And I think another one that is a, a good goal. And Kathy, you and I have discussed this. Working with the, the HR committee to review current salaries at the library with the goal of establishing a plan for salary increases that can be factored into levy requests, starting in the next fiscal year. So a few years, a few years back, there had been some turnover at the library. Really kind of the, the nature of the, the positions and expectations of the individuals in those positions and how that factored into salary and retention was, was changing. And the finance and HR committee had sat down and, and gone through and pulled together a plan as far as targeting essential staff members and pulling their salaries up to be more in line with other professionals in, at libraries in the area with retention being the primary goal. And that worked pretty well for a few years there. But besides the pandemic, the, the real wrench in the works with that plan has been the the minimum wage increase. And the- And the. Setting, setting aside all other discussions on the, the minimum wage increase. For, for the library that, that has been the, meant that the last couple of years that. Most all the, the funds for the, the race pool have skewed towards our part-time staff and giving. Some pretty percentage wise substantial boosts there because we've needed to in order to stay legally compliant as that. Ceiling keeps climbing. So. That being the case, we're. We're due to. Take, take a moment, I think, to. Take a look at the numbers, see where we currently are standing now in, in terms of. The, the salaries for our professionals versus others in the area as well as versus others at comparable libraries. Generally, I think important to look at. At both. There aren't really that many comparably sized libraries in the area is usually the challenge for us. So. In terms of thinking about what, you know, our employees are looking at, it's, it's usually these bigger libraries that are actually. You know, route us on the North Shore. But it's good to look at both numbers. And then, you know, looking at where we need to get as far as compliance with the, the minimum wage and then. Mapping out how we're going to tackle that going forward. Because in, in addition to the compliance, we, we do want to be certain that we continue to stay on top of our retention plan. You know, we've, we've got good staff. You know, a, a lot of what we do. At, at the library really depends on. The, the staff that we have and continuing to retain. Very good staff. So we, we don't want to create a situation where we. Let anything slide and start creating disincentives. For staff members in terms of staying at the library.
Yeah. This all came up. I talked, we talked to Matt and Bill when we. We being HR and finance all sat down and had a conversation a few months ago and. And then Tricia Bracken and I discussed it a lot as we continued working on the director review. And it just seems to me that. We've got some work ahead of us in terms of really evaluating. What our salary pool should be and where it's going to come from and whether it's sufficient or not. We have to show the need. We have to look at other libraries and see what our, what staffs are being paid. Take a good look at our, our particular staff. And then of course this minimum wage impact. We've done a lot of what I would think some of the groundwork, looking at revenue sources, working on those like passports. We've. We are at least this, now where, where we want to be or a little ahead of where we want to be in terms of. Refreshing that reserve. So. Are there funds there that could go to a salary pool? And Tricia talked. The last time we met about incentives by managers and department heads and rewarding achievement. I, I'm not, I don't know how to do that. I've never done that kind of. Salary management, but that's obviously a strategy. And then of course there's looking at our. Levy. And adjusting it, which we, I would only suggest we consider doing if. We've really analyzed the needs of salaries and set up a pool and looked for, looked down the road so that whatever adjustment is made. Is correct and sustainable. But I just think this is the time to kind of do this study. Matt, the, the whole levy process starts in about September, which. Sort of comes, you know, comes out of the blue because we're, we're in, we've never even sat down, seen each other, no less work together. So with summer, everyone kind of chills out a little bit. And then suddenly we're getting data from the, the village and we're. Working with numbers that, that mean a lot a year from now. So it's just to me a good time to at least start the conversation. We know the minimum wage issue. We have some tremendously talented. Full-time people. We have a great full-time staff, but they're good people and our. Staff turnover has become, is, is not a problem now. For a few years, we had a lot of people coming and going. Not, I don't think because of the fault of the library, but it was definitely a launching. Place for young librarians to work and then go to. Something that was perhaps more challenging and certainly better paying. And many of them were geographically diverse and went different places, but. I wouldn't want that to happen again. So I think, you know, we've got a good committee here and if we could start to kind of study this. Now and give it our thought and at least begin to look at the problem or the issue.
Yeah. You know, in. Kathy, I mean, you're absolutely right there as, as far as, I mean. For, for something like this, you want to analyze all your opportunities. You know, where you can. You know, get money from in other places in the budget where you can find cost savings. And, and then you come to the impact on the levy is kind of the, one of the last things that you look at. But if, if you don't start the conversation until September, then it gets difficult to. You know, have that conversation in, in enough time to really factor it into the levy. So. Yeah, I, I think that circles back around then towards looking at it sooner and starting that conversation sooner so that we're prepared ahead of time. Since we know that it's something that we want to take a look at.
Well, it, it seems to me like to get our hands around it, we'd want to start with. You know, the, the minimum wage because we don't really have an option there. So that's going to be first priority and what, and what that looks like. And then. I'm not really sure where we proceed from there. Like our, our titles or roles, are they kind of fungible with other libraries, titles and roles? Okay. And so. And are we able to get, you know, salary tenure? History.
Yes.
Okay, benchmark those. All right.
Management Association out of, out of Chicago does a pretty good annual. Compensation survey. That usually provides most all that information for any libraries that. Didn't respond, who we want to get the information from. You know, usually it's available with just a little bit more digging. It's, it's, it's public organizations. It's, it's all public information. All that salary info. And there are a few organizations that. Commit themselves to gathering it all together. So. There, there's always databases. But yeah, it's, it's, it's available. That would be starting with the minimum wage and then running the, the numbers to compare. I think would be solid starting points and that should. Give a pretty good initial framework to start the discussion.
Bill, you have any thoughts on this?
I, I have, I've got one other goal that I'd maybe like to throw in there.
Yeah, fire away.
We, we, we talk about getting the reserve up to, to certain levels. What I think would be good is to have a capital plan. Of what that, what, what could impact that reserve so that if someone were to say, hey, why are you growing it to 50%? Well, a, a roof is 250. Some, sometimes people don't think of that, but you know, you've talked about the HVAC system. That's going to be a big expense when that occurs. So these projects, just to sort of. I'm not saying that they'll be done next year or the year after, but, but something to sort of show here, here's a, a three to five year. Plan or capital plan of things to, to, to look for that, that this is why the reserve needs to be the way it is and not that. Because we're going to continue growing that to, to, to 500,000 and assuming that we. That we do 20 a year or, or 30 a year, it's, it's still going to be four years before we get, get there. And it, it's just something, it's just more of a, and you may have some of these things already, Eric, but I'm just thinking though, if, if we've got a thing that we would then update year after year and. And maybe those major projects shift, or, or maybe one of them is like, oh, you know, this, this heating system is, is, is on its last legs. It's going to be a major project and. And we, we've already prepared for it and we're, we're, we're sort of getting ready. So that, that was just another thought for a goal for, for, for next year to add to that.
Well, that's great because one of the reasons. I like this process is because that goal can easily be handed over to a building and grounds which meets next week. And, and that's exactly the kind of thing. Actually, I'm going to guess, Eric, if we look back at our 2019 goals, which I don't recall. That was probably right there and we, we just haven't gotten to it. So that's a, that's a forever goal. And just today we had a meeting about the building plans. And HVAC always comes up in meetings and I drew on it because everything's so expensive, but we actually may well be getting. Some feedback on the building anyway. So we could ask a few more questions now than we wouldn't have done in the past. So great idea. So Eric, would you be sure that we. Address this next week in B and G?
Absolutely. Yeah. And your, your recollection is spot on. It was one of the goals for, for 2019. I know Lindy. Had been putting a lot of work in on creating a document. And. I think, you know, I just need to give her a prod to get back, circle back around to it. So I think these. I think these are three solid goals. Any other thoughts on the goals? Could have up to four. So if anybody has a suggestion for another one that could reasonably be added. So everyone.
Yeah.
Pretty comfortable with these for the, as a three goals then?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think goal number two is going to require a little bit more, you know, the work is, is, as, as Matt and Kathy mentioned, I mean, just getting. But get, make sure we got all the benchmarking data. We, we, we know where, where are and we, and, and also rate. The same title for this, for the size of, of libraries and things. So that's that, that one. But I agree, if we can get a lot of that done before September, then we won't be caught on our heels.
Okay.
Well, I had one and this is more of a flyer, but. I'm thinking ahead to the technology committee meeting. You know, we are going to do this canvas of the local libraries and kind of get a sense for what they've seen and what they're doing. Might be very easy to dovetail with that project. What, what, what unusual sources of revenue they have and see if there's anything. You know, along the lines of. I don't know about notary fees. I, you know, that, it seems kind of small, but you know, certainly the, the passport is significant. And if there's anything else like that. You know, additional revenue sources, just to kind of get a. An idea list. I, I don't know if there's going to be a whole lot. To find, but.
It's one over, don't ask. That's great.
Yeah, exactly.
I like this overlap of committees because not everybody doing the same thing over and over again. So that's great. Eric, can I ask you to just. Paraphrase all these goals and then I'll put those into the minutes.
Sounds good. And I'll, I'll send this goal document back out to everybody as well. So that everybody can have the.
Yeah.
Have that as well. So. Should we? I think that's definitely something that we should keep in mind when we go out with the technology committee. Do we want to add it as a, as a goal as well to. Work with the technology committee. In their. In their interview process to seek out potential new funding sources.
Yeah, or towards the revenue. Yeah. I, I, I'll defer to the, to the committee. I was just an idea.
Yeah, because Matt and I are on the technology committee and then, and then Bonnie would be the, the. The one person, I think we can. Be easy to overlap those, I think.
Right.
Yeah. Should be a content writer, Eric. You said it better than I.
Well, we've. I've written a lot of them over the years, so. But I, I, I do think this is a, this is a good one. This is a good ad. I think Matt works with a, works with another committee. I think it's. Potentially could yield some big results without, you know, putting ourselves out there with too much additional effort. So.
Yeah, it's one more question essentially with the, you know, the finance committees or the tech committees canvas and. Hey, if we find something, you know, maybe it's another $10,000 bogey and.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and the other thing is if it overlaps with some other committees as far as other benchmarking things, we want to find out. If we're going to ask the questions of, of some of these other libraries, are there other things that some of the other committees are looking at as well? In addition to technology that, that would, would help us, I guess, in the, in that planning process.
Yeah, great.
Something to keep in mind. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're pretty well set on the goals then. Okay. Do we have any other items for the committee this evening? I don't have any, so we're probably. About up to the end of the, the committee meeting if, unless anybody has anything else.
Yeah, I have a quick one. This book should be banned from ourselves. Wheel in the Sky. I picked, I'm, I'm saying that in jest. I picked this up the other night and I could not put it down and I am still disturbed by it. I, I read it in the evening. I, I got up at 4:30 in the morning because I couldn't sleep and opened it up again. But it's about a, a, a family with a. One child, single child, a boy who gets pediatric cancer. Is a father. One boy. It was heart wrenching.
That'll keep you up at night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rips your heart out and stomps it on the ground.
Yeah, I just pulled up the synopsis for it here on my computer and the, just the. Just a short summary of the book is, is, yeah, is just heart wrenching. So.
We, we had come in because my son missed some reading assignments at school. And we don't tolerate lack of compliance. So I said, what's your solution? And he said, well, can we get it from the library? I said, well, go find out. So we went to the library. And this was on one of the end caps. And then he and I sat outside for the next two hours until he got caught up.
Yeah, we, we try to stay on top of the, whenever there's an assigned reading. Project for a particular book at the, the schools because in, invariably we'll, we'll end up with some kids watering in and.
Kudos. I, I thought, I, I figured, well, if they do have it, you're probably not the first one that's going to gotten it. And so there's probably slim to none chance, but at least I liked he had, he came up with a solution. Sure enough, it was right there. So, so is that a dynamic process with like LBS in the middle school? Just. I know this is Dr. Main, so I apologize.
Yeah, the. Eliza tries to stay in pretty close touch with, with any of the teachers over there that will have. Relevant assignments that they'll be providing. So in, in addition to the, the English teachers. You know, who will be assigning various books to read. Or, you know, find a book on a particular subject or from a particular list. And she always tries to get those lists. And make sure that we've got things covered. But I, I know we also try and get. Get in the loop as far as like what the history teachers. Are planning to assign. Whether that's going to be researching Native Americans or, you know, writing a paper about a state. So that we've got enough nonfiction materials for the kids when they come in.
That's awesome.
Otherwise we. You know, if, if we end up with a, with a teacher that is assigning, you know, do a paper on. Sea, sea creature. Or something like that. And, and we didn't find out about it far enough in advance, then, you know, we, we don't have enough books and. A couple of lucky kids get everything we've got and then it gets to be a challenge for everybody else.
Well, kudos. I, this is the type of, that was a great example of what makes me so excited to be in this role because I mean. Yes, it was unfortunate situation, but you know, the, the community asset had the, had the ability to meet our needs.
Teach his kids how to problem solve, which is wonderful. So.
Yeah.
I love that.
Good deal. Yeah.
Sorry for the segue. Sorry for the segue. The tangent.
Good deal. Okay. If there isn't anything else that we've got to cover, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright, sorry Kathy, just being.
That's alright.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good meeting.
Okay, you too, bye now.